It being 10 after 7, we'll call this meeting of the Houston County Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First item of business, conditional use hearings. The first one is for Kurt Zender to, in the Mayville Township, building a house on less than 40 acres in an agricultural district.
I'll read that notice. Please take notice that an application has been made by Kurt Zender of Caledonia, Minnesota, for a conditional use permit to build a dwelling on less than 40 acres in an agricultural district. This is in section 29 of Mayville Township. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Justice Center basement, City of Caledonia, Minnesota, on Thursday, May 18th. All persons having an interest in the matter will be given the opportunity to be heard, relative to the granting or denying of said application, and this was advertised on May 3rd. Look here at your, at the monitor, you see the proposed site. Currently, it's a, it's a full quarter-quarter section parcel. The proposal is to split off approximately seven and a half acres, I believe. The survey's been done to outline what that seven acres would look like. It's everything, what's to the east of, of the road. Your packets provide all the requirements for a non-farm dwelling in an ag district. From our investigation, at least, you know, reason why this proposal can't satisfy those, those requirements. There would be some site work necessary, as there are on most sites with the, with the driveway, in particular here with the, with the approach. There are two possible options where that could occur, though, and we're confident that it can be achieved. At this point, I guess I'd ask the applicant if he wants to add anything. Do I have said?
You just mentioned you got a legal, do you have a legal survey?
Yes.
You do? Okay. Thank you.
I see. I have the larger group here.
Okay.
When you plan to start building?
If all this stuff goes through.
Okay. This summer, yeah?
I have certain hopes.
You have to dig a well?
Correct. We've got a list for most people already. Well, on separate, separate, I believe, Mr. Myrie has sent the septic findings into you guys already. Mr. Frank said that they were, had received his, uh, septic.
Plans. Kurt, can I ask you to grab that mic and get it a little closer? So it picks you up a little bit. But yeah, that's correct. I know I've heard chatter in the office that there are work on that and it's underway.
They did their soil samples and he did his plan model for the septic system.
So you're, but you, did you buy the land? You have an option on it or you're working out? No, no, okay.
Contingent on all this going through option.
So the road is, right now runs down where the purple line is? Is that?
The purple line, yeah.
Okay. All right. And so then you'll have a driveway off the road up, up to your house here?
Yeah. There is a proposed house.
And there would be some work on the driveway with regard to slope and the plateau at the bottom of the driveway as far as the flat.
Correct.
The required flat area.
It goes up like this and it's gonna be like this.
Well, if it's, if it's the first, the first drive into the field, right now, it kinda goes up at a pretty good angle. You're gonna flatten it out and then...
Correct. The second drive is on the other end.
Down below.
And that's a very nice slope.
More gradual.
Yeah, there's another option here. The access permits, in this case, come from the township. They were notified of the application. Haven't heard any comments from them either way, so we take that as, that there are no concerns with the proposal.
Can you explain flat approach? Is it?
It calls for a 20 by 20. Not, not dead flat, but a flattish area. So you got a place to stop and accelerate from, and you don't slide out into the road.
You know how it is right now. Who's ice over? So that's kinda, we kinda knew that.
Right.
Going into it.
And with these applications, granting the conditional use permit opens the door, so to speak, for them to apply for their zoning permits. In order for me to issue the zoning permit, those performance standards have to be met.
Under the erosion plan. Part of it.
And this being the only resident that's gonna be, residence at this time that's on the quarter section.
Correct, yes.
There is no other residence on the quarter.
No, the existing parcel right now, what would be the parent parcel, is the entire quarter section. I can't move my, you don't want me to move the screen around, but that, that parcel you see there, that is essentially the quarter-quarter section.
Right. And that's all by, owned by the same property owner at the present time. So I mean, he's aware of the quarter-quarter rules.
Yeah, in your packet, we've got one of the handles. It has the quarter-quarter section. Shows the soil types here. And again, the soil types here are in the range that allow a non-farm dwelling to be built.
So it's not class 1, 2, 3 soil?
No, it's, it's, it's class 4, 4.
So is that ag land is coming built on that, right? And is that, is that where, is that where the house is gonna be, where the little icon is? That little house?
Approximately. I intended to try to put it where...
Pretty close. Might be a little farther up.
Okay.
But yeah, it's pretty hard to tell it.
Yeah.
Like that.
That's the architectural design, though, I believe. Is that correct?
You get extra for that?
That's the straw roof. I don't know.
As far as the driveways are concerned, I'm sure that's not a very busy road, is it?
It's a dead end road.
Dead end road.
There's two houses.
It's not a dead end road.
It's a minimum maintenance.
It's a minimum maintenance.
I guess the only thing I was gonna point out is, between the two options of the driveways, the first one, or the second one, I should say, is more like a blind corner, the way it looks, kinda what I'm judging by.
Correct.
And it might, the first option might be a better option as far as not being a, a blind intersection.
It's fairly sizable driveway and it's fairly pushed out wide right now. It's just, you know, hump.
Okay.
It just needs to be, I like to be able, so you can go, come in from both directions, flattened out, nice gradual landing, nice slope to the, up to the house. That's what the dozer operator says, anyway.
Right. Does anybody here from the public have any comment with regard to the proposal? Anybody else on the board have any questions? I'll go through our findings of fact.
Your packets contained suggested findings. Public copy is available at the entryway here. If there's no objections, I would, I would move that we forego the reading of the findings and accept the proposed findings as presented in your packets.
I would make a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I'm gonna recuse myself from voting because of my city involvement with Mr. Zender. Motion carries.
Should the commission choose to grant the, the requests, have two suggested, recommended conditions. The first being that the perimidy shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. And then, secondly, this, because this request involves a split, this, this condition is designed to make the granting of this conditional use permit specific to the split that's being proposed by the survey. So I'll, I'll offer here, the granting of the conditional use permit is contingent on the split of parcel 090296000, as described by the attached certificate of survey by Andy M. Lutens, license number 47030, and may, or certified by Andy Lutens, license number 47030, on May 5th, 2017. And that ownership of the part of the northeast quarter, of the northwest quarter, section 29, described in said survey, shall be wholly or partially owned by Kurt Zender. And that, that's why I didn't know how that would go, so wholly or partially, we should cover that. And I guess that's intended that if, for whatever reason, that the option isn't exercised by him, we don't have a cup sitting out there for a non-farm house that's not associated with a parcel.
Good only for him.
Good only for him.
Or them.
Now, it could be, it could continue. He could, he could exercise the option, build a house, and then sell the house in the future. That would be perfectly fine. But if he didn't end up exercising the option to, to obtain a zoning permit, it wouldn't be valid for somebody else.
Right. It doesn't go with the land. It goes with him as the owner.
Until it's exercised. And once it's exercised, then it goes with the...
Then it goes with the land. But he's the only one that can exercise.
Correct. That's what I'm intending to do.
They are the only ones.
Or they, yes.
Thank you.
Can you just re-explain that again? What you were talking about that...
Because the, the cup that you're requesting would be recorded onto a parcel that doesn't yet exist, because you were gonna split a parcel and then...
Right.
The one that's split off will get a new number. If the split is done differently than the survey that you've submitted, or if the split is done in the future, for whatever reason, you don't exercise your option here, this cup is not valid for any other split other than the one you're proposing right now.
Okay.
I'm really recommend approval for this application with those two conditions.
Oh, seconded.
Motion made and seconded to approve the request. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Once again, I will recuse myself from the vote. Motion carries. Hmm? Clear. Our next item of business is the Darren Meyer, DeShu, Holstein, Sprigrove Township continuation, the expansion of a feedlot from 147.8 animal units to 553.7 animal units, consisting of dairy cattle, and to build a manure storage structure with a capacity over 20,000 gallons.
As with the report to the Board of Adjustment, there have been some updates since we last discussed this, this application. Many of you are on-site for the, the site visits, and there's been a recommendation made to the Board of Adjustment and a variance granted based partially on that. Additionally, there have been more detailed plans that began to come in from the applicant and his engineer. Again, multiple permits are needed for this. This is a, the county permits are needed for the conditional use permit and a feedlot permit is needed from the state of Minnesota, which the county issues as we administer the feedlot program. Detailed designs of the buildings are required for the issuance of that permit. So those have begun to come in. The size of the, of the pit has been reduced since we last considered the application. Now we're looking at a 260 by 144 by 12 facility. This facility has been designed specifically to accommodate the proposed animals that would utilize it by his engineer. The calculations that he uses to reach that number were provided today. We're within the range where we are, based on my conversation with the PCA, we're, we're willing, we accept the calculations of the engineer, that they're building it for that capacity. So we're no longer dealing with an issue of how many capacity, how many animal capacity of a pit are we, are we talking about at this point? It's fair to say that the capacity is for 565 heifers. The applicant operates other sites in the county. The PCA uses a three-year look back when they're, when they're assessing expansion for EAW purposes. In the past three years, the only expansion that's taken place was a calf barn, and I believe that was about 10.4 animal units. And that was south of the Arnold site in 2016. There was recently a CUP issued for another increase at the Arnold site that has not yet taken place, and it is not, in my opinion, in the same geographic area where it should be considered. The sites that are closer to the Jetson, proposed at the Jetson site, have not experienced any increase in the past three years in infrastructure. The registration for that specific site was increased by about 40 animal units of this year. If you take that into consideration, we're still under the, the 500 animal unit increase that would trigger the mandatory. So I think in, in that respect, we are in a territory where we're not looking at a, at a mandatory EAW of any sort, meaning that the county would be free to issue permits for this application. I'm getting, it looks like that's all very confusing. Are there questions about any of this thus far?
So how many animal units are we gonna have? I know this, these papers, there's different numbers for the total animal units.
The total animal units at the site would be 592.5 is the figure I have. Is that correct?
Well, there's another one here. It says 553.
564 plus 177 times .7, whatever it comes out as.
All right, let's do that again.
It's 565 dairy heifers.
Yep.
Right? But that's 395.5 animal units.
In that new barn, 177 heifers in the existing infrastructure that's there.
Right.
So that'd be 741 animals or 742. I use 564 or 565. Same, 741 times .7, 518.7, 519, 520, however you wanna skin it.
Heifers.
Animal units.
Animal, okay.
Heifers, seven tenths of an animal unit.
I, I understand, but we're talking heifers, there's also gonna be calves.
No.
No calves?
No.
I thought there was gonna be 40 calves.
Yeah.
Depends what you wanna call a calf and a heifer, I guess.
Oh, you're gonna have starters too?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess, but these numbers here, I think, are based on the, the Feedlight application. I have, the existing registration's at 187 animal units right now. That's where the site's at. Here, we're looking for 565 dairy heifers. That's 395.5 animal units. And I also have 50 calves. Is that, I guess 50 calves is 10 animal units, so it doesn't change the threshold or the bucket, so to speak, that we're in in terms of how we handle this. But we should have a, a hard number, I think, of what it, what it is.
Well, I guess for all practical purposes, if you would just refer to every animal over there as a heifer, so in the future, there's never a finger pointing, is she a heifer or is she a calf? And just go with the, the 518.9 or 519 or whatever, and just call them all a heifer.
And that's the question I asked you two here. I mean, what's a heifer? What's a calf?
Yeah.
Who distinguishes, when a heifer, when a heifer's born, is she a heifer or is she a calf? And at what point does a calf become a heifer?
It's all by si, it's all by size.
No, it's not. I can't find any language.
No, you get different stuff from different folks at the PCA, so you know...
I don't know what a female, I don't know what a female cow becomes a heifer and when it loses the classification as a calf. There's no, there's no wording. I can't...
So where's your .7 come?
.7 is a PCA animal unit.
Or a heifer.
It doesn't call it as like a yearling or something like that, where it gets to a certain size and it, it's a limit. It's just...
So the animal unit, though, is based on 1,000 pounds, I guess. So calf, 200 pounds, that's, that's a calf.
But a lot of these heifers will be, by the time they get ready to calf, they'll be 1,100 pound heifers. So on the average.
Right.
You're gonna be .7 on the average.
Conversations I had with the MPC of my own, I asked them the same question. I says, what constitutes a heifer? What constitutes a calf? And it came up in a prior discussion about possibly expanding over dozens prior to this. And I said, if I lower my weights of my animals over there, I said, do I gotta expand for, or apply for expansion of my animal units? He says, doesn't matter weights. He says, a heifer's .7.
Okay.
I said, well, in your, in your language, an animal unit is 1,000 pounds. He says, a heifer's .7.
Right.
So that's, that's what I'm saying. Might as well call all .7, so nobody ever gets in the...
All right. So how many heifer increase are we talking about?
I want 518 animal units.
Total.
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 518 times .7 is what?
No, 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 no. He's ended up, he's ended up...
All right, that's 518.
Total.
He's got 700 and some head, but when you take .7, you get 518.
Correct. I just assume whether they're, what I call a calf, call them all heifers, so there's never like, the can of worms open in the future, who are, were distinguishing heifers or calves? Because obviously, I'm on the high side with this. I'll never be under, so to say.
So you would have 740 heifers at this point?
Correct.
Okay. So 518 is your total animal units.
Call 520 so we get our percentage points.
So 520 is our total animal units, and you have a registration currently of 587. We're talking about an increase of 333 animal units.
Correct.
Okay.
So we changed the 405.5 to 333?
Is that, that's what I'm hearing, yes.
Is that right?
That's what I want.
I mean, the request was 405 increase animal units.
I don't know where that came from, to be honest with you, because the numbers haven't changed.
It's 565 heifers and 50 calves. That's how we got there.
I know where the 50 calves are coming from. That one existing barn that's there, that's not used, I put the 50 calves on there for potential. Yes, that's where it comes.
We did talk about that when we were out on-site. Over here, we're gonna maybe raise some calves.
Yes, yes.
So calves there, are they in or are they out, or...
Put the calves in.
So what's that bring your total to then?
Be 10 more, right? A calf's 12, right?
Yeah, 10.
Not if we call it a heifer.
We'll call it a calf.
This is right here, calves.
So you're looking for 530 animal units then, right? Another 10 on top of the 520? Is that what we're getting at?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's as clear as that stuff in the pit.
Yeah.
That's 35, right?
So by reducing the manure pit to these dimensions, then how long do you estimate that you'll have? Before, you had what, 14, 15 months, you thought?
No, before, I was like 20-some months, wasn't I, Aaron? This is 14 months.
Oh, this is 14 months.
This is 14 months.
Okay.
I should get that.
So going from gallons, that first one was 4.5, yeah, I know it's hard to estimate, but the first one we thought was 4.7 million gallons or something?
I think so.
Yeah. What do you, how much, what percentage is it reduced then? I could've looked at the numbers here, but...
Well, went from 144, 200 feet wide, 144 feet wide, so it's basically 3/4 the size that it was.
That's 75%.
Yeah.
Right now, he's, we're at 2.4 million is what's...
The old was 2.7.
I'm trying to see who prepared this. I can't remember. Your engineer provided this today. 2.4, 25 million gallons? I'll pass this down, I guess. Maybe you all wanna look at this. It's got the calculations, how they, this was just provided today, like, take a, take a look at it and pass it down, and it's got...
The first figure then that you're talking about, that was the cubical capacity of it, dimension all the way. The actual capacity of it's gonna be less because you take out capacity, put the ramp in the cube, and there, as far as before, like the very interior, you can't fill a floor. Now, there's a free board in it, so that gets taken out. The first number was like, you're 260 times 200 times 12. That'd be like, if the whole cube was completely filled.
Yeah.
That's what the difference is here.
Okay.
A lot of it.
So where are we with the geological survey, or whatever you wanna call it, in terms of determining the integrity of the bedrock?
Aaron and I, Aaron's actually communicated, reached out to some people as far as availability. I don't know if you heard that from like the NRCS guy yet or not.
It there's, it's a possibility that NRCS might be able to conduct the investigation. It being a federal agency, they would do it at no cost to the applicant. They haven't confirmed they'll be able to do that yet, but they haven't said that they can't either. So I guess that's the first option we're going to explore. If that's not available, then we would wanna be, the county would wanna approve whatever type of investigation. It would be of, you know, the kinda caliber, I think, of the techniques that were circulated to you all. But it would be the responsibility of Darren to secure those services, schedule those services in the private market if, if the NRCS could not do it.
I'm offering openly, I mean, you guys wanna put it in there, I'll do it. One way or another. I mean, if NRCS says they can't do it for scheduling or cost-wise, I'll do it, just to basically, like we talked on-site, so everybody calms down and...
Knows you're a solid footy.
Yep, yep. Like we discussed, too, I want to know, too, for my own personal benefit. I mean, I actually talked to another firm, actually on the way here. I talked to Bruning, and they gave me their geological guides. There's a firm in Rochester that does it, too.
Now, we wouldn't, I don't think we would have a, we wouldn't dictate who does it. We would dictate the type of survey we want.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if NRCS can't do it, there is options. Before, we're looking at maybe the only option was out of Colorado or whatever. I think there is some more geographically, even local, options.
Yep.
Yeah. There was one in the, in the metro area as well.
So you have not done any depth findings?
Yes.
You have? How far down is the bedrock?
I must've, Rob, I showed them where, where the buildings where I staked it all and left, that big one, plant form, but they should've sent the findings there. They won't do.
Yeah. They've got, they just used it, used a backhoe to dig down, and they've got...
I think you looked into like cast well recordings in the area, too, you said, Aaron?
Yeah, there's actually some in the report here. Most of the well recorded, or the wells where there's data on depth, an area range from 20 up to 30 feet down to bedrock. The investigations that you set in here, these, they only, it seems like your hole, your extended hole goes down to 15 feet, because they, bottom of test holes end at 15 on each, on each hole that was dug, and we didn't hit any bedrock within the first 15 feet. I think when we come to the feedlot permit, though, we'll have to do something in addition to this, because you need a minimum of 10 feet separation, and we can't determine that.
This is just kind of like an investigation type thing, an official thing, of that being said here, that one test hole, I don't know if he's got that denoted or that point was made to, that one test hole, it went down, I thought it was 16 feet, Dave told me he could dig, it might be 15. But that one test hole down towards the waterway was only one foot higher than proposed bottom of the pit, so if you're 15 feet there, you're already 14 feet below the bottom of the pit.
You're correct. You're boring number three. Your grade is at, it's above the surface.
Yes. Try that by me again. What, no?
Aaron's recorded depth in the test hole was 15 feet below.
From the surface.
From the surface.
There, at the water, at the waterway.
Correct.
Okay.
And the proposed bottom of the pit would be one foot below where we're digging, so we were 14 feet below the bottom of the manure pit on that test hole without hitting any obstructions at all. And we need 10 feet. So we're four feet deeper than we need to be already at that point.
Yes, in that case, you are. Yep. We would need three of those at, at all locations, the other ones. I'll pass this down to you, you can take a look at the, the boring logs.
So by like a test run, we have the one test run where we can get to the depth below So, by like a test run, we have, the one test run where we can get to the depth below the manure pit with the hole we had, we have four feet already more than we need, but we still didn't need obstruction. If we want to move it two hundred feet here and there, I'm like, certain, we'll have it.
Okay. And there are options, if, if there are, there's only five feet of separation, there are, I think you know this, that you had read some of the additional requirements to build this type of facility, if you don't have that ten feet of separation. Based on the wells, though, it's likely that you probably do, but we have to do the boring, so go all the way, all the way down.
If it's not official, the test run looks very positive, how's that sound?
So, at that point, there'd be about four feet of the walls above the surface right now, then, if you're going, if you're going down, you say, they went down fourteen feet, and that's four, four feet further than the bottom of the pit.
Went down fifteen feet, and that is fourteen feet further from the bottom of the pit. So, at that one point, there would be eleven foot of the wall over current grade.
Eleven foot of the wall over the current grade?
Yes.
So, then you're gonna backfill that wall, right? Yep, to backfill that.
Yes. I measured out, there's thirty-four feet over to the county right away, waterfall everywhere, or as it is right now, that's a one to three slopes. I mean, that's very doable. You know, you've got enough toe to get the, the slope.
And you take it up to the very top of the pit, or to?
Foot down.
Foot down, foot down, or so.
Yeah, you don't want them to top, so you just run, water runoff, or like icing up, pull them back.
The entire pit is concrete, is that the?
Correct.
Okay.
And all backfill, where it's exposed.
Correct. The actual southern side of the manure pit is basically, the southeast corner is almost that grade now with the current land, so that would be landscape throughout, and naturally drained. The southwest corner, I think, is the top of the proposed manure pit, is two and a half feet over current grade.
Okay, so you got a lot of backfilling along the walls, right?
Very little there. I'm saying, from the top of the pit.
Or two and a half from the top.
From the top.
But when you get down by the waterway?
Eleven feet.
Eleven feet.
Yeah, ten, because you'd have a foot there, you gotta leave one, but ten foot of backfill, correct.
Okay.
Well, the waterway goes down, okay, over in the southwest corner, two, two and a half feet, to where you, to the top of the manure pit. In the southwest corner, you said, two and a half feet?
Southwest corner, correct.
Right. Then it goes down to the waterway, comes back up to where it's only a foot to the top.
The low point is where you're talking, the southwest corner, look at the photo.
Right.
Southwest is low. Present land grades steadily to the east from the, from the southwest corner.
Southwest corner.
Yep.
It drops down to the waterway. And I can see where the waterway runs through the manure pit, so from the southwest corner, it's gotta be dropping down to the waterway, right?
Yep.
And comes back up to the southeast corner. I mean, there's just gonna be fill across where the waterway is now.
Correct, correct.
There's not too much fill in either corner, but there's gonna be fill in the middle of the manure pit.
Yep.
In that regard.
On the northeast corner, then, and on the eastern edge of the pit, where the waterway is now, on the eastern edge, that'll be also eleven feet or more, pushing up against the wall.
The bottom corner, obviously going south gets less, yes.
Okay.
As we built the, the ones we built the hole, they're all backfilled at a three to one grade, too.
Okay.
That should be alright, that's a good.
You can actually, structurally, they claim you can backfill them a lot steeper. A three to one is where all you can mow with a lawnmower decent.
Yeah, yeah. So, you got enough clay there to do it, or enough, you need to bring dirt in?
I think there, the time you dig the hole, yeah, you get a lot more than you anticipate.
Is that clay, pretty much, under there? That's what it says here?
Uh, couple holes, like two, three feet black dirt, that was clay.
Okay.
Dave told me.
It's better than sand.
Yep.
We're talking about the waterway now, or wait till later?
Right, I think you could talk about it.
So, as long as we're talking fill and whatnot around the manure pit, when we originally were on site and did the, the onsite review, we were talking about a culvert going underneath the, the space between the manure pit and the barn.
Yep.
If I heard right, at the Board of Adjustment, that's changed now?
The engineer said that's fine, it's an option, but he said it'd probably be a better option for everybody, if you build like a terrace, so you have a reservoir, which I think we kinda talked about all day. If you have like a terrace above it, and have a reservoir of water, and he says, just take a big terrace inlet and outtake all the way down and around, he said, maybe it's be better off outtaking it along the southern side of the pit, and then go north with it along the eastern wall.
So, instead of, instead of putting in the culvert, you'll put in an earthen dam, so to speak, with a, with an outlet tube in it, and just reroute the water around the, the manure pit.
Correct.
Still having control of the drainage, granted, it's not that big a watershed area, but still having control of the drainage as far as the volume, because of the outlet pipe.
Right. His idea to get the outlet pipe was to, because getting away, the culvert away from like your loadout ramp and everything, just to move it upstream.
Your loadout ramp, again, is on the southwest corner, I'm sorry.
Southwest corner, yes.
Southwest corner, yeah.
Right.
Same place the culvert would be, I mean, that was kinda idea, and he said, if there's enough fall or anything else going naturally, he said, move that intake up and away, where the water's gonna be going through.
So, your earthen dam, then, is moving back up this way?
Basically, all the way.
About there, it's there, okay.
It's a, you've got a buried pipe that just pops out over here, and it doesn't go underneath.
There's not gonna be a buried pipe all the way around the corner, just the earthen dam, and then an outlet pipe that goes back into a revised waterway, or are you gonna have a pipe all the way?
Buried pipe.
Okay.
So, it comes in, you've got a reservoir there, the water intakes, and it comes out of the other end of a pipe somewhere over in this?
Correct.
Okay. Back in the existing waterway.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Excavated around, or you'd have to put it under, like you were talking.
Right, yeah.
Pretty big pipe, you're thinking? He said, he figured out what it takes.
Right.
I asked him that question, too, and he says, all calculation. He says, you look at how many acres it drains, and.
Right. But it's still, from the neighbor's point of view, as far as water flow going down through the valley, it's still gonna control that upper reach as far as the volume.
Correct.
Based on the amount that that pipe can handle.
Yes.
So, that, it'll retain massive amounts of water.
Yeah.
And release it at a, at a uniform pace.
Yes.
Gonna have the outlet pipe at the bottom of the dam, I wonder, upwards, or?
I have no idea.
Okay, you don't wanna store water there necessarily. You don't wanna store water there.
It'll be a standpipe.
Standpipe, okay, okay.
Yeah, it would be like an overflow type, it'd be a standpipe, so I mean, at ten seconds into rainfall, it starts draining, it's not.
Okay, yeah.
But it's gonna be limited based on the size of the pipe, the volume of water that goes down.
Correct.
To the drain.
How about water that comes off the south side of the barn roof? Is there any discussion of that with the engineer, or is there any thought that you have, and how that would? Is that a problem in any way, or is it?
I, it's a problem to be addressed. Obviously, it's going to, but I mean, we'll have to move it one way or another.
It's not going to the pit, it's going to the road ditch. It's going to the road ditch.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the water off the south side of the building's almost gonna have to go to that holding pond, based on the landscaping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I assume you take, for lack of better terms, that terrace, it's gonna be holding the water back, and you have to fan it back to the north to catch all that.
Yep. It's just landscaping, as far as that's concerned, but you're gonna have to, otherwise, you're gonna have a goofy dip someplace in there, so it's all gonna have to be landscaped, unless you got the road coming out of the pit that you need to maintain.
Right, the present water right now, for that whole area, does come back to that waterway already now.
Right. So, that whole area, the south side of the barn, and all the, all the grassy area is gonna be controlled by that levee, or whatever. The north side of the barn will drain off and into the ditch, and go down. So, it's just the north side, and surface area-wise, it's a hard surface, but it's, it's not that expansive compared to the area that you're controlling with the dam.
The north side will just be seeded dollars of lawn.
Right. It'll perk into the grass, and if you get enough rain, it'll hit the ditch and go. On the north side of the barn, versus the pit area, you're not adding any water. I mean, the water that falls in the pit stays in the pit, so. It's kind of an offset.
Right.
Okay. Moving forward with your.
Are there any questions about the EAW stuff? I know that that was, I have a hard time grasping, and I'm sure that a lot of what I said might not have made a whole lot of sense. If there's questions about that, I guess I'll try to, if I simplify it by saying, if you were expanding by five hundred animal units, we'd be in a mandatory EAW category. It's my determination that we're underneath that right now. If I need to go into more detail on that, I guess I will, but based on this site and based on other expansions, that if, that could count toward that, we're not hitting that number. The only way we'd hit that number is if we counted the expansion at the Arnold site that's happening now, too. It's about seven, eight miles away. I don't think that that feedlot and this feedlot are working together to affect the same region in aggregate.
Well, and it's my understanding that that is a expensive and time-consuming process.
That's a correct understanding, yes.
To, to be avoided if you can.
I, I think in large part, that's the reduction in the pit is a reflection of your understanding.
Eric, I interrupt you for a second, on that water thing, just to make a point. The roof water of that barn is forty-four thousand, four hundred and nine square feet. The amount of water that the push-off pad and the manure pit, they're gonna catch, which is gonna be zero runoff, is thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-five feet, so the two of them are kinda gonna negate each other.
Right.
I mean, if you want a numeric number on them, as far as comparison-wise, that's what it is.
Back to the EAW, when you talked about that, according to the way it reads and what you gave us, an expansion of existing animal feedlot by more than five hundred animal units, it's an existing animal feedlot. It doesn't say all feedlots, it's just that existing site.
Correct, there's, there's a.
So, the other site is a separate entity.
The L, in this case, Houston County is the LGU, so we can determine, in large part, what we view as the same geographic area. I guess it's my recommendation that we would not view this site and the Arnold site as the same geographic area. They're not contributing to the same water, minor watersheds, or things of that nature, they're, that, really, none of the operation on either site affects the other site. I don't think it's reasonable to add them together.
It says existing animal feedlot, it doesn't say multiple feedlots, so I gotta believe it's just the one we're talking about.
Well, it depends on the geographic area. If they're close enough, you'd have to cover it.
Right.
But this is outside.
Right, okay.
The other problem is, it says, it's a mandatory requirement for the EAW, it's within a thousand feet of a known sinkhole.
Well, that's if you had that five hundred
Okay.
increase, so we're under that five hundred increase.
Right.
I guess my thought on the EAW, that's just to make sure that the environment's gonna be protected, and that's done by the feedlot rules, and by the manure management plan, and a lot of things already.
Especially if we're talking about taking a closer look at the, at the bedrock here, I think that that's probably more valuable than whatever information might come out of that EAW.
Aaron, the geological survey and the CARST survey, are we basically talking about the same thing?
No, a CARST survey is part of any liquid manure storage proposal from the feedlot permit side of things, so not the CUP we're doing here. That is essentially a review of maps with CARST features on them, in this case, the two feedlots that we've, you know, have on, on this map, we've talked about. It's looking at the soils, it's doing the, kind of, the boring's, or digging some test holes to get that type of information. That, that's the CARST review that's part of the permitting requirements for a manure pit. The geological survey that we're talking about is far beyond that. That's where you're getting a two-D or three-D images of what the actual bedrock underneath the entire footprint looks like. You get way, I guess with the CARST review, if there were a anomaly or something in the bedrock that would be likely to cause a future sinkhole, you would only know that if you happen to take your boring right in that one location, and you have to take, for something this size, three boring's. So, the odds of that are pretty low. When he's talking about doing the geological survey, it's gonna cover, as I understand it, a representative sample or the entire bedrock underneath the footprint. So, you would be much more likely to pick up on, if it's an area that's susceptible to future sinkhole development.
Anything else from the board, before we move on?
I don't think I have anything else.
Turning the page. On page four, we're talking about water usage, and there is a water, because of the volume of water, situation, the DNR requires, they take care of that water.
They would be.
Permit.
They would be the authority on that, yeah. I guess we would be.
Don't have anything to do with it.
We would be recommending, I would be recommending to you the same condition, it's on any permit.
Right.
That would require you to follow state laws, if state laws, you need that permit. We catch that in that way, but it's not something that the county administers.
Just on page forward, it says CARST, because of the movement of the facility, it's now three hundred feet from the nearest sinkhole, not the two hundred and sixty that we had talked about.
Correct, yeah, that's, that's an error.
I think at this point, I ask for public input, before we do findings, or?
Yeah, I don't have any other information to add, if there's no other questions.
Yeah, public. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to address the issue? Bruce? Just, yeah, everybody, when you, when you address us, you gotta come to the front and use the microphone.
Bruce Kimbrough from California. So, is it my understanding that the southwest corner of the manure pit has the ramp to offload or outload, and so, where does the vehicle go from there? Does it go west directly to the driveway?
Going west to the current farmstead?
Yeah.
Out on the road, if it does, has to go that way, if it has to go that way, it'll out directly out into the field, the adjacent field.
So, the impoundment isn't going to interfere with going to the east? I mean, off, on the land itself, or are you gonna go through the yard to get to the, to the, to the farm drive, and then out onto the new house road, or are you going to be able to go from the drainage ditch area and head up to the southwest, I mean, to the southeast? I'm, I'm, what I'm answering is, is the impoundment going to interfere with wanting to run the honey wagon uphill to the southeast?
No. Shouldn't be able to go any direction you want out of there.
Well, once you come out of the pit, you're gonna, like you said, go into the farmstead, and then access new house road, if you're taking it someplace else, or you can swing out of the pit, not necessarily go through the holding pond, but you can get around it to get to the fields, you know, to the, around the, the bigger sinkhole and, and area and whatnot. You can come around the impoundment to get to those fields.
Yes.
There's not gonna be an infringement. You don't have to use new house road to get to the, the area behind it.
Correct.
That answer your question?
Uh, well, so then, well, no, not really, not really. I mean, can you, can you put your finger on the map and say, this is where the impoundment ends, and this is where I can run my honey wagon?
If you put terrace diversion, I'm gonna call, here, and pipe it all the way back around through here, this here, obviously, your pipe's gonna be buried here, you could actually come out here, haul this land.
Okay.
You could go this here, go that way, if you wanted to, you could come back through this building and access this land, and actually, this here, you could come through here and go back here to the driveway here also. I mean, you can go basically any direction you want out of there.
Okay.
There's not gonna be any physical barriers.
I just didn't know, I don't see any descriptions how far away the impoundment wall was from the southwest corner of the manure pit.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any physical barriers at all for access.
Any other questions from anybody?
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing no other questions? Anybody from the board? Sorry, I didn't see the hand come up.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Hi. I'm Richard Golderson with the Springfield Township. And I guess road safety was kind of what I was wondering about too. Looked like they kind of addressed that here and stuff with hauling manure out. I don't know, like with the feeder wagon and stuff, if that would be going in and out of the road in the driveway or if that would be coming, I don't know where you're going to have your feet and stuff. I guess not.
They'd be coming from the.
The other side?
Other side over there. They'd be coming down, eight, down to Allison Inn.
Okay. And then I guess our other thing was that, a couple of things. If there, you know, there's already a couple of sinkholes on there. If there ends up being a sinkhole underneath that, I don't know if that's a, if that's something that can happen and stuff on there. That's one of our.
I think that this geological survey that he has agreed.
Will kind of cover that?
Agreed to do.
Sure.
Will, will identify if there's a fault in the bedrock. And if there's a fault in the bedrock that would likely lead to a sinkhole, we won't issue, the permit won't be issued. He won't want to build there.
Okay. So that's like an X-ray then?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. And of course, that, that is a major concern, that there would be a sinkhole under this manure pit or under the building or under the ramp or anywhere right around there.
I want it to be a manure pit, not a total wall already disappeared.
And I, I guess too, you know, like if you always hear some talk about a breaching of a dike and stuff, and if it does go, of course, it would go to the east and it would go into Morris Sweeten's houseyard and stuff. But like if a person could put a retention pond on the next farm to the east there on that wool farm, retention pond or dike across there, that would really help alleviate anything that could ever possibly happen. And that would also take care of any extra water if it doesn't soak in in the grass, you know, like you said. I, I know this isn't probably the appropriate place to put, to talk about this because it's not on the existing farm he's talking about here. But he does own the adjoining farm also. And that, I think that would really alleviate a lot of problems and stuff.
You're talking on the same side of the road or across?
Same side of the road, further east.
Further down the waterway? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
No, there's no, there's, there's no place to put one on the same side of the road.
On the same side of the road?
On the south side of the road?
Further down. I don't know if you can move the map.
Yeah, I mean, try to refresh this. It's not working for whatever reason, but.
It's across New House Drive, right?
You're talking on the, on the north side of New House Drive.
No, on the south side of New House Drive.
In that water, in that waterway, I guess?
In that waterway.
See, there's quite a bit of elevation between the pit and the wool farm.
Okay.
Where if there was a spill or anything, it would go down that waterway.
Oh, so it wouldn't drain that way? I guess I assume.
It'd drain under the road.
Well, well, if it's a culvert, it'll flow over the road probably. I don't know. You guys know where. I don't know exactly.
It's being built below.
Yeah.
I guess it will be up 11 feet, I guess, in that corner, but.
Water's going here.
Okay, it goes on.
That's where water goes.
Right. Goes under New House and that culvert.
Yep.
Yeah, and there is a pond, yeah, over there.
There's a huge pond down there. There's a pond built that I don't know if it's been restored.
Right here? That's the pond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I was thinking to understand that, south side. Okay, thank you.
I, I didn't exactly hear what he was saying, but was he talking about a second pond in that area?
He commented one about a second pond across the road, right?
Yes. My husband has also mentioned that.
Right.
That it would, would help all the way around if, if there was a second pond there to hold back the water from coming down the valley.
How often has the pond that's there now overflowed? How often is that overflowed? The one that's there now? The pond that's there?
I think it's always, it is too full. I mean, it doesn't hold the water. It's always coming out of there when it's raining.
Okay. Where does most of the water come from that fills that pond? Is it on the south side of New House Drive or is it north of New House Drive, further up the valley? Where's that water coming from that's filling that pond? Is it coming from this waterway by the pit?
Yes. And Richard, you would know also where the water comes from that would come.
It would come, it would actually come from up here in the Jetson, but then also it, it would kind of come around from another, around again. But yet again, I'd say it's about half and half.
Okay. You think that much comes under New House Drive off of this property?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, looking at the contours.
I'm going to argue that very little of those.
I think Morris talked to your brother.
Yeah, he did.
Yes.
So the thing I'm confused is how far down that draw is that pond we're talking about? Darren, you know where it is?
Yeah.
I think it's right.
First of all, hold on a minute. Try to use your contour break. This is all of this far, the drains that way. Everything else here goes that way. All this off Richard Starley's farm, all this here off of Harold Jetson's, Luis Jetson's, still on that, goes that way. This is like that much compared to that much. The present pond on my property is right here.
Is there another pond above that someplace?
No.
It's just a valley. I mean, it comes down that valley.
Right.
Yeah, but say in this building, doesn't change the dynamics of the water ship.
I was just wondering how the water was going to be coming down past where you are building the pit.
Part of it's changing waterways.
Right.
Same as it does now.
Right.
Same as it does now.
But see, there's.
It's going to go underneath the road in the same culvert. Not going to, the direction is not going to be changed.
Actually, you said that your, your holding pond by the pit was sloping down somewhere.
Should, yes. Yep, it will. It's got free fall now.
But there's not much, I mean, it's so far back, there's not, it's not holding much back at that point in time.
Yeah.
Plus, you were saying that the size of the pit and the size of the ramp, the water that falls there is going to go into the pit.
Yes.
So does that negate what?
It's going to be 5,000 square feet more runoff.
Okay.
With the building the pit there was now. 5,000 feet is.
All right. Yep.
Not much.
Okay. All right. Do you understand that?
It's just that we're having, you know, we've had trouble with the water.
This is prior to, this is just the way it sets right now though.
Yes.
Mrs. Sweeten. Yeah, it's not as a result of this, what he's proposing.
Well, I, I'm just concerned because of where the wa, where the pit is setting over the, where the water would run.
He's actually damming it up, you know, so it's going, he's actually putting a terrace above that to stop the water from coming down so fast. And it's going to be released slowly. So it actually, the actual flow from a heavy rain should actually slow it down a little bit because there's not maybe that much water coming from this area above.
Not particularly just from your place, but from all the area.
Yeah.
It would come down and if there was a pond down there to hold it before it comes through there.
Which is valid, but it might be a separate issue from what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You know, no, it's a valid, valid point, but it, but I think you're concerned about water quality?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Very concerned about water quality.
Right. And that's valid. But I, I think one of the things he's proposing to do is if you understand what he's talking about, they're going to do a site, a geological survey of the bedrock to see if there's possibly any breaks in that bedrock or any caves or potential openings. And if they find something like that, they won't, they won't build there.
Yeah, well, I'm not too educated in it all. I'm just concerned about water supply.
Yeah, right.
For future generations. I don't have many years left, so, you know, it would be for future generations that I am concerned. But.
Yep.
I thought when Richard, I thought I heard Richard say that and.
Yep.
And I just thought I'd mention that. It is something that Morris has talked about.
Right.
And Morris did talk to.
Isn't that a soil and water?
Yep.
Issue.
Thank you.
Yep. What's that?
Another pond, wouldn't that be soil and water?
Yeah, I think they would be, maybe. I guess I'm not sure. Derek, could you maybe just touch on why, should folks be worried that this pit's going to overflow and why or why not?
Stop it overflow. I'm going to haul it. I mean, it's engineered for the size. That's part of the reason we size it. So we can get from crop to crop. Say, it's all, it's all engineered and thought out. I mean, it's, there's a lot of planning goes into this stuff. It's not just a knee-jerk reaction. We're going to throw this in and do this. I mean, it's thought out.
And you, it's designed for 14 months' storage?
Correct. 14 months of storage with a foot of freeboard to, to basically give you some cushion in a excessively wet year or whatever, if that would happen. If you get a 500-year rainfall, you'd still have a foot to go.
Is that more capacity than your typical manure storage in Houston County or less? Or how does that?
Oh, I don't think, I don't know of anybody else in Houston County that runs 14 months' of storage, to be honest with you.
Okay. So altogether, it's, this is a, a very low likelihood of something like occurring on this.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it kind of goes back to discussion out there, Dan. Our discussion, I said, I don't want to be held to a higher level. And you said, well, maybe because you have the most livestock, you need to. And engineering of this thing, I mean, it's done that way. I'm not trying to get by with six months of manure storage and everything else. I mean, manure pits cost money. I mean, financially, I'm better off with small one hauling. Because manure pit doesn't change the expense of hauling. It just changes the expense of holding it.
Well, it sounds like you've got pretty accurate safety measures built into it.
Yes, yes.
The back fill, protecting it from, from collapsing out, so.
I mean, I'll use, for example, and maybe I shouldn't, last year when we had so much rain in Houston County, I had other farmers that brought manure and put in my pits because my pits are size big enough to carry more than they need and theirs were all running over. They were hauling theirs and dumping them in my pits, keep theirs from running over.
I think the single biggest issue about water quality would be that survey.
Yes.
On the bedrock.
Yeah, I would agree.
You understand?
That's water, that's water quality, not water drainage.
Right. That's water quality. That's the issue these people over here are most concerned with.
Well, the other thing about the water quality is the runoff. And I think you addressed that pretty well. It sounds like you guys incorporated immediately, which some of the smaller guys don't always do quite as good, maybe. And it sounds like.
We haul or dries off. We can pull through it. We follow it.
And once you get it worked in, it, it maybe it's a lot of that.
Generally speaking, to the farmland of that area, like the ones we do in Iowa, they run a FOSS index. A part of your FOSS index is your slopes of ground because phosphorus cannot percolate through the soil with water. The only way that phosphorus can contaminate anything is with soil because the phosphorus bonds to your soil right away. And this farm here, it's low slopes, it's got low erosion factors. So I mean, it runs great FOSS index that way too, for the most part.
So how much nitrogen actually you think's going on with?
Very little because it's a heifer manure. It has no grain in it. It's all forage-based.
You don't have, it's not that high in nitrogen?
Yeah, yeah.
Would you estimate 50, 60 pounds break, 100 pounds break?
You'd probably 50, 60 pounds.
Break. And you spread it in the fall and then you do fall tillage to cover it, incorporate it?
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody on the board? Findings of fact, if you please.
Do we want to go through them all? Do we want to go through just the ones that need to be gone through? Preferences?
Previous meeting, we had decided that the ones that had a bearing, you were going to highlight in red. And those are the ones we were going to discuss.
Okay. The planning commission shall not recommend a conditional use permit unless they find that the following, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the, the quantity of water runoff.
I believe we discussed that with the terrace and the, and the water control of the surrounding area from the barn, half the barn roof going into that holding area as well as the pipe controlling the volume that comes from that small area so that the water drainage into the adjoining properties will not increase.
Sure. And we've got the pits kind of making up for what's coming off the roof.
Half the roof.
Yeah, while setting the additional from the roof.
That potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that the standards have been met.
Well, I think with the geological survey, if you conduct that, Darren, and get a good, clean bill of health there, that, that potential hazard would be addressed. That seems to be the biggest hazard and biggest potential in my mind.
I guess one thing that alleviated that sinkhole out in the field, are you thinking about maybe doing something that one by the building when you get a chance to or not?
I don't even know what's there, to be honest with you. Those livestock builds are sitting there, the ones that are sitting there on lots of farm. I don't even know what's sitting there, to be honest with you.
You had a picture that you gave us or something. We saw a picture of it right alongside the barn.
Derek showed it to me too, but I was told that it was still lit with rocks, I was told. I don't know what, what the deal is, but.
Well, you'll probably check it out sometime.
Yeah, yeah.
The sinkhole out in the field, now you filled it in, can you work across that?
Yes.
You can?
Yes.
Can't spread on it though.
Correct.
Well, then a certain area of the sinkhole, you.
Perimeter there, 100 feet there or?
I think it's, I think it's 50 if you incorporate immediately.
Okay.
That adequate utilities, access roads, drainage and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided.
Well, with regard to drainage, we've discussed that as far as the, the terrace and the, and the pipe going around and the drainage from the building, half of it comes into that area. The manure pit doesn't drain. It holds everything. And he's going to grasp the area to the north of the building as far as being an area that can absorb or perk water before it hits the ditch. Roads and whatnot, I don't think are an issue.
Okay. And I guess the last thing is, oh, this reinforced that if there's a water appropriations permit needed, you'll seek that.
Do you have any idea how deep that well is though, as you have there?
Mike told me that it was just under 300.
Under 300. How, how old is it? Do you know, how old the well? Barely new well?
Yeah.
That the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. There was a glaring air in your packets here that was brought to my attention. So we would need to conclude that it will not adversely affect the neighboring properties.
That's correct. This is an agricultural project. It's an agricultural area. The neighboring properties are ag as well.
Any other thoughts? That adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. I guess to, to what I've provided, I'll add that management is, is likely the biggest or one of, one of the biggest contributors to, to odor. So that, that offset model can't accou- So that that offset model can't account for how a site is managed. Proper management would likely result in a reduction. Improper management would likely result in an increase.
Darren, you talked about a physical barrier of the manure pit. Is there some sort of appropriate or suggested shelter belt of certain species of trees spaced so much, or what are you thinking there?
I know in the past, we've referred folks to soil and water for a recommendation there. You know, a fence could also be used. That's why we're not, I'm not recommending one or the other. Give you some sort of option there, in terms of what it would be, tree species, shrub species. That's, you know, I prefer not to
You're not talking a chain link fence or something?
No, a fence that visually screens. Prefer not to be like a buckthorn or some sort of noxious species, but maybe something that has foliage year-round would be better than something that doesn't. So any thoughts as to why, why or why not this would be a a disturbance to the neighboring properties?
Well, odor is the only thing that can really be. And flies, I suppose, was discussed a little bit, but as I understood it, because of the type of manure, it gets a more of a crust on it than, than a dairy cow manure. So this is gonna have a crust that'll control the odor to a certain degree. When you go into there and start moving manure, you have nothing you can do about it. It's a farm.
Doesn't the county ever give you like a 20 or 30-day window of stinking to clean stuff and everything, or isn't that a Minnesota thing?
Yeah, the state has exemptions. There are there are rules about odor levels at property lands and public spaces or road, there's a certain threshold. But because, as you say, when you're pumping, it's likely gonna exceed that, the state does carve out it. I think it's between 10 and 20 days a year, you can apply for that.
I think it's 20 days.
And you're only looking at pumping.
I'll have to swoop down in three, four days, see what other holes in the, I ain't scooping fast.
So is that thinking that that's is an acceptable level in an ag district, or why, why is this a is this reasonable, and if it is, or is not, why?
Well, farmland around there, I think probably affect you more than anybody.
And it's an accepted condition in that area.
Cleanout would be 24 hours a day?
Uh, probably 18.
18.
Well, if it's for less than a week, I think it's, it certainly would be tolerable. Even if it went into two weeks, but I mean, obviously, you're gonna get after it and get it done and move on.
Yeah.
That site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare.
Your analysis is a little bit off because of the change, right?
Right, so I guess I've added the proposed location has been revised to satisfy the setback requirement. The additional heifers proposed will not be utilizing the milking parlor or holding areas. So that's no longer a concern either. And I think we could probably add to that willingness to carry out a geological survey alleviates concerns over potential harms to groundwater. Any other?
Along with the holding pit, holding pit for water?
In terms of concerns for runoff?
Right.
So those are the findings we needed to address. You could seek a motion should you choose to grant the permit. I have three recommendations here. First, the permit shall comply with all three recommended conditions, excuse me. The permit shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Secondly, the permit shall obtain all permits required under Minnesota animal feedlot rules prior to commencing construction. And lastly, prior to the commencement of any phase of construction or site work on the proposed manure storage structure, a geophysical investigation acceptable to the county shall be conducted to provide sufficient information to the county, but the subsurface conditions are suitable, as determined by Houston County zoning office, below the proposed manure storage facility for the proposed use. So that's a long way of saying that we'll do a geolog- geophysical investigation before we begin to build in the area, and that the investigation has to come up with a clean bill of health, as a way to say that, I suppose.
You wanna read it again?
Sure. Prior to the commencement of any phase of construction or site work on the proposed manure storage structure, a geophysical investigation acceptable to the county shall be conducted to provide sufficient information to the county that the subsurface conditions are suitable, as determined by the Houston County zoning office, below the proposed manure storage facility for the proposed use. So I think my use of that last comma could maybe be we could tweak that a little bit if you like, I guess, is what I'm saying. Go ahead.
No, I, I'm just thinking about it. All right, is it, the manure pit is all we're concerned with, with it, for a sinkhole? If we, if something showed up on the survey, like you, what if it, what if you showed a void showed up where you proposed to replace the barn? Would you deal with that, or would you try? Obviously, the pit is a thing we're most concerned with, you know, with the manure and the pit, but what would you do if you found a void in that area where you're gonna build a barn?
First of all, I guess if it's in the top end, and how big of a void it is, is the big thing. If it's on the bottom end, just offset from the manure pit, no, I'm not gonna do it.
Well, hold on a second, Bill. Under what I'm proposing here, he wouldn't be required to be doing any sort of looking underneath the barn. We're only looking, only asking him here to look underneath the pit.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, okay, good.
Are you only, are we only concerned about the pit, not the barn?
Correct.
I think so. I guess if, if it opens up underneath the barn, we're not talking about
A big spill.
Big amount of manure going.
About in the drainage area?
Well, what are, what's the concern there, I guess? Explain, why?
Uh, runoff, um, from buildings. I mean, there's gonna be a certain amount of manure from the haul and stuff. I'm just asking the question.
I guess I, I would
Because if it's under there, I mean, then it's who knows where it'll end up?
We'd be aware, though, I guess. If something opened up there, it'd be visible. The pit is a concern, because if something opened up there, we would never know it until disaster happened.
If one opened up under the pit and the pit broke, you'd have a catastrophic dumping into the groundwater. If you have one open up out in the field someplace or in the waterway, that's pretty minimal as far as the amount of material that you're gonna lose. And then he's gonna have to put a berm around it to prevent the runoff from, from going into the, the way I read it.
That's, that's exactly, I guess, how I would think, approach that.
So it's, it's the manure pit that is the, the true concern. As far as, you could have a, you could have a hole open up just about any place, but we don't want one under the pit.
It could go a lot of different directions, go deep, and you could die, and you'll never find actually where it comes out.
You can find a shirt that goes down a sinkhole and comes out someplace in Ireland.
Geological survey is gonna be above in the area where the pit, no, nothing else.
Yeah, this, if it turns out that this is procured in the private market, you'd be paying for it based on area, so I don't think it's reasonable to ask him to look at an entire field or something underneath a pit location. I think that's reasonable, based on the same reasons Bob went through before.
Is there a concern, and I just asked this question for public safety, I mean, that's a lot of manure to be spreading, and if there's other sinkholes that develop or in the process of developing that you don't actually see where that manure is spread, it's probably gonna end up in the groundwater too, I bet.
Well, he can you talk, you could probably address that better.
I guess I'm countered as if you don't see it as a regular soil profile, to the point that it breaches where it's not gonna go anywhere. And once it does breach it, there's already the regulations in place that you gotta adhere to then at that point, anyway.
So the state feedlot rules have regs on applying near sensitive features, and sinkholes fall within that. That, you know, he has to apply, or comply with.
So here's my question, then. So when we get into federal, state, and local regulations, the feedlot permit will basically take care of this issue?
Uh, no. The feedlot permit would take care of a lot of the design questions that still have to be filled in, but the feedlot rules, so even if he wasn't applying to build something or expand his site, he still has to abide by state feedlot rules, which require him to set back from a sinkhole that's in a field for manure application. Yes.
So just a question, what, two years down the road, a sinkhole shows up right outside the barn, then what's the procedure for dealing with that?
I don't know the answer to that.
So
I don't know. It's relevant. I don't know if that's really relevant, Dan, if the bedrock is all stable underneath the manure pit. You know what I'm saying?
It really wouldn't.
If you, if you do the actual analysis underneath the manure pit, if you didn't have that, and you have something open next to the barn, you start to think, wonder, does that cave continue to go underneath the pit or whatever? But if that's addressed on the front side, I don't know if it's really that relevant.
Well, I think these are concerns for any, any farming operation. It's, it's not unique to this process, and I don't think I don't think this process affects it at all. I mean, you can, I guess you can have a sinkhole open up any place. And you, you deal with it with whatever is appropriate, but
I was just, I was just wondering if there's state regulations or guidelines or something like that. I mean, how you, how do you deal with a sinkhole when it opens up in an area?
There may be, I guess.
You don't know barn in a 300 feet of that.
I know, just to start with. To start with, that's why I was wondering, you do your geological, geological survey, I don't.
Don't drive your tractor across it.
If you do your survey, if it might not be beneficial to look a little further than the pit, I don't know. But I don't know what the cost is, if, doing that. If it's another $2,000, $3,000 to look a little further, might not hurt to look a little further, you know, where your ramp is, and where you're gonna build your hole at your
The ramp, where the ramp would be would be, because the ramp is considered manure storage.
Part of the pit.
Okay.
That would all be taken care of.
Okay.
And this might be extreme, but you have to remember that neither caves started as they lost a pig.
Well, we know we're in a sinkhole area. That, that's the only reason that, that there's concern.
If we back into that question, you know, one did develop by the other barn. In my researching for this permit here, the state is aware that a sinkhole opened up. The DNR had mapped that sinkhole, so they're aware that it opened up right next to a milking parlor. You know, not a lot happened, so I think that it's kind of, you, you deal with a I would imagine you'd fill it in, or, or something in terms of practice, but I don't know if the state would require anything additional.
Well, especially if you're, you're not gonna have a whole lot. Everything's contained anyway. Yeah, so, you know, water sinks the ground all the time. And if, but, you know, as long as it's not an area where there's manure in the cattle herd, that kind of water's going in the ground all the time, I guess, so.
So are we comfortable with that last condition?
The only question I would have is if we require this condition for Darren, I know it's been discussed, do we, are we gonna be requiring this for other people doing the same thing?
I think if we had a different applicant who was proposing a similar project in an area where we have, you know, two sinkholes, I would be recommending that we, we require it. That would, again, that would be the determination of the planning commission as to what you, what action you took, but it's not, not to do with him as an operator, it has to do with his site here.
Right, okay.
That last condition, do we want to hear it again? Are we comfortable with it?
Read it one more time, would you?
Prior to the commencement of any phase of construction or site work on the proposed manure storage structure, a geophysical investigation acceptable to the county shall be conducted to provide sufficient information to the county that the subsurface conditions are suitable, as determined by the Houston County zoning office, below the proposed manure storage facility for the proposed use.
Take that as proposed by the Houston County, put it to the end.
So you wanted to say sufficient information to the county that the subsurface conditions are suitable below the proposed manure storage facility for the proposed use as determined by the Houston County zoning office. I think that's a good suggestion. Is everyone else comfortable with that?
And possibly even in conjunction with the survey guy, whoever.
Right, it would, we would be relying on them. I, I suspect that they're not gonna wanna come up and say
Maybe that's, maybe that's obvious. You don't have to put it in there.
They may not wanna say, yeah, it's a good spot for a manure pit, or no, it's not. They might say the site has these characteristics and that, and this, so that's why they, I work with them to come up with this language.
If they have to give a determination as to whether to build a manure pit over it or not, there's gonna be a difference in cost. Guaranteed. They give you the information, and we make the determination, it'll be a lot easier.
That's a
We got that figured out. I'd suggest putting one more condition in there. We're gonna ask Tom Hoeschek to put the screening up, and he's already agreed to do it, so let's just put that in as a condition also, just to kind of keep things the same. Just add a condition to it.
Is that already a condition from the
We, we added that as a condition that the manure pit has to be screened in his variance that was approved tonight. That's, that'll already be done.
In the Board of Adjustment. Are we all okay with that? Because I got one last question. My question. What proposed animal units are we talking about now?
530, right?
Are we doing an increase of 405.5 per your original, or are we doing 368?
I want 530 total. You write it, I already wanna write it.
You have 100, you have 187 animal units right now.
So an increase of 343.
Unless we take the 50
Going back to the heifers.
Calf heifers. What, what number are we using?
Going to 530.
Yep.
530, you had 520.
530 animal units to a maximum of 530.
All right, I thought you had 518, round it to, round it to 20.
520, but does that have 50 calves?
So the number is 530 less 187, for an increase of
343.
343.
Okay.
And you're okay with it?
I wasn't.
Really?
All right. And we would entertain a motion if there is one?
I would make a motion to accept it with all of the conditions we previously defined.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion. So the Go ahead.
And your condition there acceptable to the county, right?
Yep.
County board?
Zoning office, I think it was.
I think I specified zoning office on the final review of the survey that's done. I guess, yeah, county, should we clarify that by saying zoning office? I'm, I'm I do say that the investigation proposed has to be acceptable to the county. proposed has to be acceptable to the county. Do you want to specify zoning office?
I was unclear, so...
Yeah, I would say zoning office.
Final approval comes come down.
You're the one that's working with these companies, so...
The overall final approval is the county board, though.
All we're going to do is say, Aaron, what do you think?
I know that, but all I'm saying is the county board really has, he might say it's okay, but the county board has final say.
But his recommendation on... Do you want to do that? I mean, that's not the way to have it.
No, no, your recommendation on the soil survey, it should come to your office, and you either approve or deny it, and then it goes to the county board.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's not the way I was envisioning it, I guess I was I was envisioning it for his feedlot permit. He needs a construction permit from the feedlot program, I don't typically take those to the county board. If you'd like me to, I could...
No, I think Dan's just saying, it wouldn't need to be a board thing, it's a zoning administrator thing.
Oh, okay, misunderstood, that's the way I view it as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Because you're working, he's working with the survey companies, he knows what he's looking, you know.
All right, any other discussion?
So does everyone understand the conditions now, then?
It goes to the board, not until June 6.
Oh, this year.
Correct, we don't have the fifth, yeah, we got a fifth Tuesday.
And Aaron's going to be gone, so you want to cover it?
Yeah, I'll cover it, yeah.
That's the standard at this point.
Have you ever covered one, hasn't it won?
Not this year, I don't think.
Yeah, no, no, we don't, we'll hear it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Last item of business is the approval of the minutes of the April 20th, 2017 meeting. I think that's the last piece of...
And if you guys have any questions on zoning permits, I could field those.
Oh, yeah.
Question, any questions, when that goes to county board, they're talking June 6th, or what's the county board? Is that what it is? Is that what it is? Yeah, I believe so, yeah. We're thinking now, yeah, 30th, I think it's, we don't have a meeting, right? So seven days after that, so.
Tuesday, the 6th.
I think the biggest, you should have your CUP before we're done with the the feedlot permits, that's the, I mean, you need engineered plans from your engineer for that to be issued.
But as it stands right now, I can move forward, get my feedlot stuff, my engineer stuff, and that goes back to you, and then it gets its stamp or whatever?
You've got the site approved essentially from the county, county board will be final action, so if you want to, I mean, you technically need to wait till they act on this recommendation, this is a recommendation board, not a final decision board. But you're, the next, I guess I would, I would say that it'd probably take longer to get all the feedlot permit requirements done than it would be to wait till the county board takes action on this. So it's up to you when you start getting those plans drawn.
Thank you much.
Thank you. So approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve minutes.
I'll second that vote. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Zoning permits that were on our packets, any questions? I don't think we have to, it's just if there's any questions, right, we don't have to approve them?
I'm not looking for approval, just questions.
Okay. Motion denied. Motion dies for lack of a second.
What, adjourned?
Well, no, we haven't done that, I'll wait for that.
So what do we have, a motion for what?
Unless there's any other discussion, we'll wait for a motion to adjourn.
You got it, Dan.
We got a motion in a second. You got them? You have a motion? Justin seconded? Yeah, that's what they decide. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yep.